Stop, stop on that ball, watch it. It's not me. What did I say? All that thumping and pivoting and just get up and down.
Or in seven weeks.
I stopped by my house.
She had surgery to fix her.
Let's take that, we're gonna scrape off. That's what's happening.
Give them a second. I'll give it to you, I think. I'm saying that.
You can do that.
They're seeing her.
Grab them fast.
So they just got some ice.
She's gonna be there. Still a bit. Start there.
Yeah, the last where she went, where she actually did work.
Almost.
Uh, oh boy, she's still in grave.
That's just. Yeah, front. I'm doing there.
Yeah, five, three months.
Pretty hard to sit right in front of that tiger hawk. Oh, no, Jim's here.
Was I turning around? Jim just stay standing.
That's, that's not going.
Jim, Heather's busy.
Oh, thank you.
Wait for it again here.
All right.
We're running this.
Already, you step it up.
Starbidi?
All rise.
All right. When do these just tip the flag? The United States of America into the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning. Hey, Evan, Warren, all are present. Heather's tied up in the back with the conversation she's having. Um. We can go ahead on the first two agenda. If you want to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Don't say it.
You're not your cue goes back here, what's that?
They moved and seconded to approve the agenda.
Do you have your microphone on?
We don't have a microphone, well, I can turn that one on.
My glasses?
No, just make sure the battery's still working. Okay? Is that any better? Can you hear back there?
A little bit, not like it normally is though.
Hmm. There's a lot more here. Yeah, if you kind of go on, see how it goes. What's that? On the beat, there it goes. See how it goes, okay. They have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Other comments, this time, uh, we'll ask for the public to speak on county business topics to be recognized. Raise your hand or stand after recognition. State your name and address. You may speak one time per issue. It is, if the comment is for an item not on the agenda, please understand the board of supervisors will not act on your comments at this meeting due to requirements of the open meeting laws. But may do so at a future board meeting by placing it on the agenda. The chair and board members welcome comments from the public. However, all comments must be directed to the board and not others in attendance. Please keep your comments germane as not appropriate to use profane, obscene, or slanderous language. No personal attacks will be allowed and we may limit each speaker to three minutes. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and. And, uh, or stand up, just let us know. If you want to speak.
Nice rain.
It was a nice rain.
Nice rain. A lot of it.
I can speak now for about the weather, Steve.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah. Of course, I agree with you, it was nice rain.
Yes, that's. Anyone else? Good, Laura?
Uh, Laura Wilson from Dizer. So, uh, just to try to understand your budget a little better. When it says total ending fund balance to thirty, it's where you look at each column. So that's the amount over that we'll have left over at the end of the year in our fund? Or what are the, the five million, the six million, the seven million in this each column? What, what do those numbers mean?
Um. Give me a line.
The, uh, very top, right over it says proposed market taxation. That says total ending fund balance.
Yep.
Is that what's gonna be left at the end after leftover in the budget to help build up for following years? Or what's that?
Yeah, so it's, it's like what's, um, you know, like the prior years, we know what's in there. Otherwise, we estimate what will be in there. And then it's not all accounts, like it's not the full county. It's only like our three funds and Karen, correct me, whatever. There's just some of those, the top items.
Uh, anything, Arpa Roads. Oh, no, not that one. Arpa Roads. Computer Fund, Your Capper Projects Fund, all those.
Yeah, just a few funds, so it's not like everything that we do, but it's just what we have to report to the, uh, Department of Management. Yeah.
And this is all that the hearing is over today is what's on the sheet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Perfect. Unless you had anything to add to it.
Good job.
Did you just say what's her name? I didn't say what's her name back. Uh, I'm Karen and I have two things from other people. Um, one, the blue bus that's been sitting, is it insured and is it being maintained so mice and stuff don't get into it so that it will be able to be run? And number two. Um. This be directed towards Ben. We out on, um, Farmer Market Roads are wondering if Highway sixty-three, which is going to be closed, could maybe coincide with the closure of E forty-three since nobody's gonna be able to go anywhere? Get to town for four months anyway. And since forty-three might be done this year and sixty-three's gonna be done possibly next year, that means forty-three will be, E forty-three, due fund of bond type will be unusable for two whole fall. So we're just wondering if maybe that couldn't be coincided, um, and refigured and recalculated and relooked at? Because that's gonna be two years of no way to get to town with the Farmer Market Road. And, um, it seems like pretty similar to have the same mess that Tama has, the Farmer Market Road has no way to use it. Thank you.
Yeah, Richard, I've got a question concerning the taxes, taxes levied on property showing an increase of eleven percent. How much of that is the nine-one-one levied?
Will you point to the line I know, Richard?
I didn't see. Well, I would.
Line one.
Line one is what I'm looking at.
Okay. Um. Taxes levy, levy done on property. Uh, so the, the nine-one-one, not nine-one-one, uh.
EMS Essential Services?
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
So seventy-five, uh, cents per thousand.
What was the total tax?
Eight hundred and eighty thousand. I don't know percentage wise, but that would almost a million.
Oh, I don't think, I got to ready, I went to school.
So if, I mean, if it was from, you know. Virtually twelve million, eleven, nine eighty-six, to thirteen oh ninety-three, eight hundred and eighty thousand of it is the EMS levy. Pretty close to.
That's what I was kind of figuring, most of that was. Smart.
Yep, all but about a hundred thousand of it. Okay, we'll close public comments. Need to approve the four fourteen twenty-five regular minutes?
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Ben?
Morning.
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 We've, uh, we've finished rock on on Abbott Avenue, South of three hundred fifty Street and. West of the eighteen, I was two ten, two twentieth there. This week, um, today here will be removing the last, no fronts off, removing my trucks. Or we got those kind of taken care of last week and then, um. Yeah, for still one point that we hold up with this. Get rid of the stuff fronts off those. And then, uh, blades earlier last week kind of took care of some little V roads, uh, so right now, I don't know what it is, they can't figure it out now, but. Take care of our, our groundles. Uh, but then last week, we did some heighter seating on, uh, two fifteen street. This week, we'll be doing some heighter seating on some of our regrets from last year, um, and one of those with E Avenue, so. Uh, but then. Looking to get the shop burned down last, to finish that up last week, but we planned, um, did a lot of, bunch of. Light and all that stuff, so. Project, uh, we hope to get that finished up this week. Um, and we're cleaning out culverts there on E sixty-six, uh, we're using that new dirt for. Three hundred forty street to kind of get a crane in there for that bridge, bridge down there. Think of other, um, talk about, I think it was kind of probably a month ago with the engine and whatnot for one of our cat motor graders. Um, we got that stuff running and we should have that up here, um, by the end of the day here. So it's got to have a few, few good spare stuff kind of keep us, keeps going, um, and then. At, on my office, the, uh, UV lights, uh, we're using that in HVAC system. Uh, we're trying that out, see if it helps or not with the, uh.
This mouth.
So let's see if that, that, that's.
I had asked Ben earlier, what are we doing with the materials from the shops and so on?
So, so, yeah, I guess, um, we're giving that, all that to line bill, um, the metal and the. So, so, okay. Stuff, I think, well, that's, that's there, well, either on the, on the spot or, or ripper up or something.
Any questions for Ben?
No, thanks.
Thanks, bud.
David, good, thank you. Public hearing in two minutes, but. Not gonna let David talk about the P O E for it.
I can make it quick. But, um, so I, I'm gonna ask that we continue this for the next couple of weeks, uh, as we gather information. I was approached by Orion asking if we would entertain using them to help us as the director. I haven't gotten the back answer back yet. So this, I think, we stand the, the agenda for the next few weeks till we get an IT director.
Well, that's.
Could you wait a little more time? Do I increase exemptions, Karen? The claims, claims seem to be heard it straight forward.
Got the claims here, um, one hundred three thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and seven cents. One zero three comma four five nine point zero seven.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
So. Too fast.
Go ahead.
I'll second it. Need some work over here.
Yeah, Murray. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Curious. Yeah, eight forty-five, we need a motion to go into public hearing for the budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries were in public hearing for the proposed FY twenty-six budget. Anybody from the public wish to speak on the proposed budget? Okay.
I don't know if this is the crock of time, but, um, it has also been, uh, adjusted to me and also even just on a personal note that, um. And I think maybe you've already requested this out of, out of public health, especially because that's the department that seems to be the loosest as far as accountability goes, but in their budget, um. It was suggested and requested to me that. That tracking be done so that, so that, that the staff there is always, um, billing out their hours and knowing exactly where they are. So that they are making the best quality use of county time, county dollars. I know that's been brought up in here before and so it's been brought up to me again because of the salaries that they have. Um, and they are one of the looser entities and I'm sure this is not gonna go over well because they're probably listening. So I guess I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to say everything that was said to me at this point. But track, better tracking so that they are accounting for their hours and billing, billing out their, the hourly times because of the salaries and. The insurance benefits that they get, um, from the insurance companies that would be up and above. Ashley was asked why they are not self-sustaining at some point because of the different other money, monies that they have coming in. And they're one of our biggest budgets, so I think that's why the public is a little more concerned about them than say Casey there, you know? He always knows where his deputies are on Sunday morning.
Uh, Laura Wilson again, um, on the top section with revenues, it would be, I guess, line twelve for miscellaneous, line nine for intergovernmental. You could just maybe explain what types of things fall under miscellaneous or what types of things fall under intergovernmental for those types of revenues? Just, just for a little clarity.
Line eight?
Line eight, yeah, line eight and line.
Line eight, line twelve, Karen, give us.
Without running a report until I exactly what's coming out of there. You want to stop over sometime after running a report and see what comes out of there, but I'll come up with that idea.
I don't.
Ultimately, we approve the budget and then Karen uploads it. That's where all this, she inputs all this onto the Department of Management's website. So we approve everything and then she uploads it.
It out between like service areas, like. The attorney, what were they?
Oh, they bring in revenue and that comes to intergovernmental?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
See another hand over here? Hey. Anybody else wish to speak on the public hearing?
I have a question.
Okay.
Could you explain the tip? Let's go down to that line, it's not too far down, county, county taxes, tip, tax, revenues. That would be, I'd have learned to explain it, I believe. Say it from the bottom. Oh, line, um.
Some, right?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
That's revenue, so I mean, the tip would probably be the Vienna Wind Farm, right? Is, is there anything else that's included in that? Okay. So that means we bring in the money and then it goes out to a loan that was taken back in, you know, whatever it was, two thousand and twelve years ago.
Do we keep any of that?
No. Nope, it's just.
As you said, it'd be like six through seven years before we get to realize any of that? Or what did you?
Yeah, I think it's, uh.
Probably about once.
Twenty thirty-one?
Yeah, twenty thirty-one, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I can think Jim Smith. So that, you, uh, road. East town along the Toledo Airport Road, that's up for expand, uh, research, research, uh, something, or, you know, certain. Okay, and I know that been delay. Is that tip money going to, towards that?
No, that'd be the, I mean, the engineer would manage, it's his own kind of levy, correct? I mean, is, is how that would work, so, yep. The tip would be go to general, general basic, once we would start getting it, is my assumption.
And I, you know, I'm wondering how necessary is that to have a department surface? There've been a lot of complaints, or I know it was in the original plan. Years ago, that been, I don't know, been quite a while.
About thirteen.
Yeah, and I remember our road, we live straight east of Toledo on, on Farmer Market Road and that was widened, be hard surface. Back in about seventy-seven or seventy-eight. And it's a wide road now. It's never been resurfaced because all the material went to the county lake and north of the county lake. So wasn't used there. And now it's, you know, too wide basically for the road graders, isn't it, practically? Because it's a wide road. And it has been paved, not that I need it paved or want it paved, but just wondering how essential is it to pave the one hundred? Toledo Airport, there's what, three houses on that road that people live in.
To elaborate a little bit on that, why is that up for pavement widening and redoing that level? Why is that?
It's in the five-year road plan.
Why?
When I first got on, I was in the five-year road plan, so I have, I have to do it in there. That's. That's. All right. I kept it on my, that should be you.
Yes, because at one time that was going to be a casino, because they were planning to have a casino over there. Well, that was. Taken out of the plan, that would have been about thirteen years ago. So if that was in conjunction with at the orig- original time, that was in conjunction shaving that. So no more, no more, as Jim just said, no more than what's going on out there on that road. Totally an agriculture road. Just wondering about the needs to budget for that. That's why.
Not be in this budget. Just one there.
I know.
Just, just clarifying, being sure where.
Wouldn't that be a next year, provided to widen it?
Five years, no. What year do you have it?
It would be fiscal year, but this is twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
So if you can't fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so it'd be after twenty-seven.
I was, when you were gonna start it. When is, so that we're talking about twenty-six now, is that? And that, that extends to July twenty-seventh.
Yep, June thirtieth to twenty-six. And then he's talking July first to.
July sixth to. Okay, so that's twenty-seven.
June thirtieth to twenty-seven.
Okay, but then, I understand, okay. That's clear now, but I'm wondering why you would start, why even widen it? There's no need to, or no desire to have it or serve it.
Richard?
Getting back to a question concerning this reason you have in this public hearing. The money that's coming in for the tip tax, does it cover the loan payment? Or does the county have to subsidize that?
Um, from what I remember, I think that it covers most of it and I think that we cover about fifty thousand.
I knew it was close.
I think that, that might be, might be wrong, but, uh, Karen saying, yeah, that's right. Karen, on the budget?
It's the budget.
Okay.
So I wonder if there's anything budgeted for this year, next year, I don't know, upkeep of the roads due to the closing of sixty-three and E forty-three. Anything in that budget, pose for that?
Just rock, I mean, what we probably have for maintaining our roads.
There'll be some chloride, extra chloride too.
Chloride and.
Dust control, yeah.
Dust control.
Any written comments? Close the public hearing?
I make the motion before the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Um. Next, we would need to approve the resolution four twenty-one twenty-five A to adopt the FY twenty-six budget. Make that motion. Move.
I'll second it.
Then seconded. Rock call.
Over.
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next thing we need to do. Discuss, uh, discussion of possible action on resolution four twenty-one twenty-two five B to approve elected official salary adjustments for FY twenty-six. Giving all electeds two percent increase except for supervisors at zero.
I'll make that motion also.
Been moved?
I'll second it.
Been seconded, just question? Rock call.
Over. Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Donal?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes as well. Vote.
Liquor license?
Yep, discussion of possible action on the liquor license. For backyard wine.
I'll make a motion except then. Sorry.
Been moved and seconded, um, to prove the liquor license, uh, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Casey. We're gonna talk about mental health, would you be willing to address our group?
Sure. I woke up early.
Casey had gone to a meeting last week, um, provided by ISAC.
It was the ISSDA.
Okay.
Civil. They had a share of breakout with two members of the. I believe, or else. Were talking about all the changes that are gonna be coming up after July one. And. I would say one of the, one of, if not, I don't wanna say the only, but a good thing that came of it was the, if the county is getting reimbursed for current mental health medication for inmates in the Tame County Jail. Or any jail for that matter. In the Tame County Jail, or any jail for that matter, that line item will continue for next year. I don't, that was some discussion during my budget hearing is the complete unknown on whether or not we're. Sure that it would get reimbursed. Also brought up quite a few grumbles from a lot of the other sheriffs that were there, because there are some counties that. Do not get reimbursed. So I'm gonna do a discussion about. What this regionalization is gonna look like after July one. And I did tell the board, I did get a little testy down there, because feel like we are just chasing our tails. And we've had many things for the past, I'll say ten years, that have taken away. At state level that affect the counties greatly. And I made that uh abundantly clear, that I feel that we're just chasing our tail, and we're not identifying the main issue. That is the services that law enforcement have to deal with. Because there are no services available, one being mobile health, or I'm sorry.
Local crisis.
Mobile crisis. They want us to uh survey and provide all these, this information and data about. Our current mental health state and services as of, as they relate to services. And I think that. There needs to be some. Objective viewing of the data that is retained. Because while there are two organizations that provide mobile mental health crisis services to Tame County. In our experience, it's on average about two hours before they show up. Then we have to stay on scene, we end up transported and anyway. So to say, if anybody were to say at the state level, based on the data that we provide, that we do have. Mobile crisis services, I would say that. They're not effective, and we wouldn't have them, that's my position. It was a very good conversation, it was a frustrating conversation, because again, I feel like we're chasing our tails. I feel like. The sheriffs understand, because. We see the effects of what they're taking away and what is limited on the state level. And how that relates to small counties. And I just, I feel like we're chasing our tails, and we. Need to get something figured out, but it doesn't sound like we're. I take that back, it doesn't sound like the state at this time is identifying the main problem with more bed space. Newer facilities, bigger facilities. And we're just creating these organizations that will support. The main problem, which is mental health care and services in Iowa. It was brought up that there are many times that we take individuals to the hospitals who seek services and. We are told that they're either too violent, they don't have a bed, you can't provide them a service, and they end up coming back to the jail. One of the biggest concerns that I had was the lack of knowledge when it was told to them, and I'm not. I'm leaving names out of it, because I I know that there's a lot of good work that's being done, it's just. I don't under, I don't think that the state, or maybe they do. Understands how much counties pay for medical care inmates in the, in the jails. It was made abundantly clear during that meeting that. So there's limited services, limited healthcare for uh inmates, which is not true. Uh counties are footing the bill for all the inmates. That need medical attention, and I brought up in the past four months, we've had two people. Specifically turn themselves in, just so that way the county can pay for their medical care. So that is something that I would like to really push. Especially with the medical care, is that I don't see how the county can bill for somebody that. Is alleged to have committed a crime in Tame County. But also, I think that it's very important that we start identifying and working towards a solution for the. Main issue of the mental health services. Because I've, I've, I've talked about it before, but. There's a very fine line when it comes to the law enforcement and mental health services that we want, I wanna see our deputies. Being the best law enforcement officers they can, that see the law and investigations. However, we do end up dealing with a lot of crisis calls, and I want to make sure that we identify where that fine line is. To where this is a service that needs to be provided, and this is what we can provide as a sheriff's office. Overall, it was a good conversation, very frustrating conversation, but uh something needs to be addressed. But I think that we need to really sit down and identify where that line of the stand is, where. Law enforcement is involved and when they're not involved, so that was kind of the flip notes we're getting.
They've mentioned anything about mental health transport reimbursement under the new state system?
Um, they did, they just specify if it's gonna be a new service for counties that are not getting reimbursed. I know for, at the end of the conversation, they said, if you're getting reimbursed now for something, anything related to that. Whether it's medication, transportation, you'll get reimbursed after July one. But again, that caused a stir with some of the counties that are not getting reimbursed, because. They've been paying for their own, and then finding out that half of the other counties are getting reimbursed. It's gonna be interesting to see what happens.
A population deal?
Uh, it, it, there are some counties that are much larger than ours that are getting reimbursed, so. There are some that are small. So I, I really don't know what that mechanism was that, that allowed us to get reimbursed, or what. What they didn't do to, to, to get reimbursed, I, that I don't know.
Are these transports. Scheduled, in other words, they're in our jail, they need to go someplace, so are they scheduled at some point in time, or?
So a lot of, a lot of times, if it's an emergency, mental health mill, they'll be at the hospital, but most of the time they're. At, they're already at a facility, they need to be transported from a facility to another. And that's where we utilize central Iowa when we can, if they're nonviolent, nonviolent, we'll have them do it, but. Most of the time, we have the uh flow state and, I can't remember the other one, I thought I had. Telehealth services from the jail, that way we can minimize the transport and all that costs.
Do you believe they understand the unintended consequences of regionalizing services? I, I, I ask that question because it's big on my heart and mind, we're spending money because of. Downward directed rules, and they're not paying us for that, and so somebody somewhere is baking out, whether it's. Not an individual I'm talking about, whether it's the federal government, the state government, um, I still haven't heard back from Nebraska's office yet. On the status of. Being reimbursed for people that are in jail, that's a, that's a federal requirement, that all their insurance stops. Even if they have it, if, if they don't have it, obviously, we're paying, but if they have insurance, I don't understand why it would stop. And that needs to be answered, and I know that's not yours, but I'm saying it because it needs to be addressed at the federal level. And I know that there are a million, six one two. There'll be a billion dollars to California for the folks who have entered the country, uh illegally, I'll just say it silly. They're paying for their medical care, but they're keeping American citizens who are in jail having. So there's money out here, just needs to be sent in the right direction.
So, yeah, to answer your, to add a comment to your comment about the regionalization, my only concern is that. We're gonna be in this, my understanding, we're gonna be in the same region as Black Hawk and North County or.
Going to the west.
On west, Marshall.
Western, north, we're in with Black Hawk now.
But we're switching to a different, they're, okay. It still stands, my, my concern with the regionalization is that. I have a feeling that they're gonna make sure that the larger areas are taken care of before the.
Before a smaller county.
I think that's evident from where we've been, and I think that will continue. That's my biggest concern. There's no reason why the citizens of Tame County can't have the same services as the citizens of Marshall, Black Hawk, Polk. But I don't know, I don't know how that's gonna look, and I'm theory on how this whole regionalization is gonna look with. As it pertains to services that we're gonna.
Yep, the irony of that, because the whole reason to regionalize was to en- enable counties that are small, that don't have. Mental health services that are afforded to people in larger metropolitan areas. Was so that it'd be available, no matter where you live, you could get the same services, at least the core, the core plus services. Hasn't been, in, in many people's opinion, hasn't been accomplished.
Well, that was brought up too, there's a lot of money that's being spent for these smaller counties in the region, but we're not seeing that, so that was a. I think the correct term now is a doji moment. Uh where they've identified that there's a lot of money being allocated that is effectively being for. Smaller counties, and that was also my concern, is that when they've identified this, you know. Amount of money that is supposed to be for a specific service in a region for the smaller counties, they take that away, well. They take that away, is that service also gonna go? And it was a question that couldn't be answered, so.
Well, there's a bunch of sheriffs in the room, could somebody initiate an investigation for fraud?
I, I, I think the uh, the overall. Of the issues that uh we face, and, and I don't wanna put the sheriffs in a, you know, a special category, however, I. I, I, in listening to a lot of the other sheriffs, we see a lot of the uh consequences of decisions. Upstream that. For some reason. We get to deal with. But they, they were made very well. Quite a few issues that need hammered out. Some of those issues they were unaware of, so hopefully we'll get some more traction on that.
Yep, and it almost doesn't matter how much money that they would allocate to the smaller counties, we have no service providers in our county. Um, I won't say we have none, but we have very few, uh that's some of the. People here who are qualified and who will provide the services.
Well, I think that was also brought up, the, the mental health liaison for each county. Of the ninety nine counties, there'd be ninety nine different liaisons and ninety nine different ways of doing it. So some liaisons are very good at what they do, and they're, you know, right there to help out wherever needed, and. Some you don't even know exist, so I think there needs to be some. Standardization on what that job description needs to be to ultimately help the county that they're serving.
Is that the mental health advocate, or the, like the law enforcement?
They were saying, they kept, they were talking about liaison, with the new regionalization, there's gonna be a mental health liaison, mental health advocate. But as it stands right now, it sounds like there's really no standardization on what their duties are.
Yep, the, the judicial mental health advocate um is mandated by the state, outlines all of the duties that have to be. Met and all the services have to be provided for people who are in inpatient hospital stays, only for psychiatric reasons, and I think it's only for. Adults, uh the liaisons is, is a position that's cropped up kind of across the country, that locals, local. People who have been left behind, I guess, as they move services away from, and this decision making power away from the local. Boards, uh or the schools, and there's all kinds of different governmental entities that have come together, their school liaisons. Where you're having a lot of, a lot higher mental health episodes and crises in schools, and so they just hire somebody to be in the school. Just to handle a mental health crisis, and so that, that is the position probably that you're referring to. There's a lot of promise in that, in that region, so, or in that realm, we are uh. Researching that a little bit more with our mental health judicial advocate, because she's only part time, and we're looking at maybe uh adding a position there and. We're gonna start having more discussions and about that, and who our partners will be in that kind of stuff, so. I, she, she will be here, uh she'll be at the, presenting at the public health meeting next Monday. With her and another law enforcement liaison, be, and Casey's on their board, so we're still gonna. Gonna try to work to try to fill in some of the gaps where we're missing out on, on uh mental health, so. Overall, at least it's a good, good outline to. Identify there are some gaps in services, and that if the state's not gonna take care of it, we're gonna have.
May I ask a question about this calendar?
Uh, we'll wait till public comments.
Will there be another meeting that you'll, that you're going to?
Today?
Another mental health move.
No, I, not, not on schedule. Okay. Next, everybody take a little bit, could we recess for a little bit, take a five minute recess?
Next thing's what, nine thirty?
Yep, next thing's at nine thirty.
So it's still nine thirty roughly? Cause last two.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Yeah, that's right, that's right, nine thirty.
Yeah.
Need a motion to go into public hearing.
A motion going to public hearing.
I'll step down. Okay, let me move a second, then to go into public hearing. All, all of the favors in me.
I.
For public hearing. On ordinance, or to repeal ordinance BI five, six point five wind energy conversion. We had any comments or written comments, right? Basically, the, what this ordinance does, it allows us to. Choose what kind of a taxing structure that we have for wind energy conversion systems. One of them is based off of, um, usage. There's some kind of a, a technical term. The other one is based on valuations. We currently have a format that has been adopted, it was a ordinance placed in the, I think back in about twenty twelve. Um, those adopted, that was put out by the state that, um, limits the amount of. Tax that you can, you can, uh. Reclaim off of some of the valuation that it tops out, out at thirty percent of the valuations. Uh, starts at zero, um, year one goes to five percent year two until you're maxed out at thirty percent of the valuation that, at year seven. So. This other formula, formula, um, seems like some of the benefits would be that we might be able to get more money, um, out of wind. Um. So that's, that's the ideal of addressing it, we wanted to hear anything. Um, anybody in the public, did anyone wanna speak to it? Good.
Oh, I have a question, uh, more than a comment, or a little something, I said, do we know what Marshall County is currently doing for their tax structure on the Vienna half?
It's the same as what we do.
That we're currently doing?
Yeah, yep.
I had heard that they're getting more money out of theirs than we're getting out of ours.
We had someone come to the public forum and brought that up, but I went and looked and, um, we're getting actually more than Marshall is. So it must have just been a timing or just, I don't know how many turbines they have versus us, but we're getting just a little bit more, but it's still based on the special valuation.
And are you able to review how much output is currently coming from those? Those turbines or is that a report that they give you, like, is it, is it self-reporting to you or you have a? Regulation, regulatory board to review how much is out, outputting to?
Today, it has nothing to do with output, so today it's just based on whatever the project costs.
Then if we switch to the output, is there a way that you guys do that or wouldn't it be self-reporting? Cause I, I believe valuation is almost self-reporting, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the Department of Revenue would work with the wind company, it's proprietary that they can't share. Like what it is today, so you can't put like, you can't like say, hey, here's an exact example of what it is, but. Uh, it would kind of leave the local assessor and would go to the, the state, to the Department of Revenue.
So we would be guessing what it would be changing to if we repealed the valuation, like to go to. To the usage and then if for some reason they stopped. It would still be there, if their output dropped for some reason? That, is that what would happen if we repeal this?
Also, I mean, we'll have to look into it, I mean.
And do you plan to possibly take action on this right after the third, the two and second and third, uh, hearings? Or is this just to get input from? From the, the community and follow the procedure outlined by our code? And then you guys will discuss it and make your decision down the road when you get more research done, or is this gonna be like, as soon as we're done? We're gonna make our choice after the last public hearing.
Think we'll determine that after how today goes.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea to get some money for the county. Question is currently the value of the wind turbines does not go up by inflation, so the. The dollar value made fifteen years ago is still the same today without inflation. I'm hoping it's possible when you put a new valuation to them that you could have inflation. On there so that it goes up each year rather than stays the same with the future. My house goes up, so I don't know why the wind turbine is seeing a lot of the value.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, I don't know, is there a chain when, you know, and they put up the Vienna farm, like, oh, I mean. They put up smaller turbines, they were large at the time. And then last year, whenever they re. Refurbished.
Repowered them, yep.
Repowered them, they put up larger turbines. So I wonder how the, the valuation would go on that, I mean, they should be valued higher and they are brand new.
They're not, we're valued as, as our.
Yeah, so with what we have in place today, they're valued the same, even when they were repowered, it never changes, and so they stay.
And you know that the new ones cost a lot more than the original.
Yeah.
Wow, that doesn't seem quite fair, I do have to got another question, the income tax, that is a progressive income tax from five to ten. I mean, yeah.
Property tax.
Property tax, excuse me, from five percent to ten percent.
Yep.
Now, when they refurbish the wind farm, are they still maxed out at that thirty percent then?
Yep, they stay at thirty percent, there was actually a challenge on that and they have to stay at thirty percent, but they stay at that same assessed value, so it's kind of a. They don't go back to year zero.
Yeah, I, I understood that from way back then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one more question, do, do either of these choices affect? The farmers that have those easements, or is it strictly the, uh, wind companies or the energy companies that own your license? Does any of it affect the land? That's under, cause I know it's a whole parcel that's under, does anything else affect the farmer? That has that land that the easement's on, or is it all? Can it affect just the, the energy governor? Either way.
From what we would understand. The form, the two different formulas that you can, you can adopt. Only lays out specific standards for the reporting for the wind companies. How that is, uh, worked out with the landowners, I don't know. Other comments?
Got another thing, starting to sample, I know there's a lot of person in the county about should we have. And, uh, I know somebody that brought up at board meeting. It's some, yeah, now in Minnesota, it's very popular where they put up a small solar field. To supplement energy for the nearby town or city. And if, you know, work comes to work and we decide, maybe we should say. If we're gonna have solar, it has to be used within the county rather than shipped outside. I mean, that is an option for the, maybe the board to, uh, think of, okay, and throw that out. At least we'd be using it ourselves, sure, I think it would be more expensive than what we've got now, but. Going to own use.
There's no other comments, we will, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead of the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Then move a second, then to go to public hearing, all those people say aye.
Aye.
Oops. Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda.
So do we wanna talk about the public hearings first?
Oh, sure.
I guess, I mean, based on today's comments, can we, can I make a motion to waive the second, third? Uh, public hearings? Is that fair?
Yeah.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to waive the second, third hearings.
Okay, it's the move a second to wave the second, third greetings. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
And then can I make a motion that we set the a meeting to uh discussion slash possible action repeal ordinance V one point five six point five one energy conversion? So that, I guess, a discussion topic on it, because I don't think we have that on today. We could put it, I think we already have a time set tomorrow, but we're waiving that, so uh we gotta be what, twenty four hours? So maybe put like, do we do ten o'clock?
I I won't be available.
You won't be available tomorrow?
We have Wednesday.
Does everybody think?
I'm on for the ride.
Or can we do the next Monday?
The Monday.
You're gonna put it on Monday?
That works. Yeah, good, good. We'll put it on Monday.
Not my second now.
Well, we don't really need a motion then. If we're just gonna put it on Mondays if we need it sooner. Good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. You can bring this down to potential closed session percent to Iowa code twenty one five. I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered. Pursuant to the individual's request for a closed session. Uh there has not been a a um request for closed session, and so we will entertain this in open session. So ball or otherwise speak to it first, I guess, so.
I did talk to Bob this morning and uh he did suggest to just have a conversation, open session. Is that correct, Bob?
That is correct.
All right. And he also notified me this morning of his intent to voluntarily resign his position. Um and and stated that that would be effective or his request for that effective date of main of first. So.
Really not quite how I, well, I mean.
Go ahead.
Please, yeah, so you understand, about three weeks ago or so, I had met, started making it known to people that I was planning on resigning the position because of the fact it was taking up so much time. And it, I was very concerned about all of the items coming in uh with lawsuits and everything and taking up more time. Uh I expressed my concerns to you folks about a number of the items. And uh my concern about what it's going to cost the county and the time it's going to be taking. And I don't see where it's gonna be taking less time. We've got uh right now with uh my hours and stuff. I have uh excuse me, I'm ready uh. It was based on, you know, when I was hired, of the fifteen hours a week. So that's uh right now I'm twenty six hours away from having uh all the hours pretty year. Keep track of all the hours. When I was hired, I was informed to keep track of these. And if we were to start running into all these issues, which can over, I'm saying we have no idea, that's all gonna go on. Uh then we would be looking at the compensation for that. Um as you are well aware, I do not uh, I haven't turned in any mileage. I haven't asked. I I declined any cell phone reimbursement. And uh trying to do the job for the county and, you know, to toot my own horn, but I feel I'm very dedicated to this and wanting to uh that I wanted to give up this position and I started informing some people of it. Is I want to make sure that everything is taken care of for another person coming in. So I don't want anybody somewhere left us with a mess. Um I had a lot of things that I had to go through down there and trying to organize and, you know, we had a tough time finding some things. I know there's a lot of files down there that haven't been gone through yet that, you know, I haven't been able to touch. There hasn't been time. And uh I I want the people that were taken care of, like for instance, just this morning, another gentleman turned in a permit here and I informed him, well, I my intentions are to be done maybe first is what I'd like to be. But uh, you know, I'm concerned, okay, can we have that done? Is that acceptable? You know, um I wanna help the next person coming in, whoever that may be. It was a forty hour a week job or something, but my understanding it was supposed to be, you know, part time. You might have a few hours one week more than you have another, and that's fine. But this is starting to take up way more than it should. And with all these lawsuits being filed, there's gonna be more. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I I don't have the time to be taking all of that if I'm not being compensated. And I certainly understand it's supposed to be part time. I didn't take it intending on it to be full time. I didn't want that. I'm happy with fifteen hours a a week or, you know, whatever it may be. This does not include time at night that I take on my home and talk to people. I'd like to get back to people and everything. I'd like to be, try to be efficient with that. It is very irritating when we're waiting on attorneys on answers and all this court stuff. And then I have to just sit and people get upset. What are we doing with this? I can't act until I have, till I know. Sometimes there's people want information, even the supervisors, and due to possible conflicts of interest with affiliation with TCAT or past affiliation, we have to be careful and make sure that it gets cleared through attorneys. I don't want to chance another lawsuit. And I know that probably ticks some people off sometime when I say, hey, I've got a check on this. Anybody can have any information they want. They can call anytime, but I'm gonna make sure that it's okay to do so, because I'm not gonna be having the county sue anymore for a mess up. I want to be sure. The new person that comes in has to understand they have to follow code. And it doesn't matter what they think about wind or solar, they have to follow code. And they may not like the decision that they have to make. But like in my case, I'm invited by council. People have about what the CUP say or anything like that, have to go by what the council says. That's an argument for another time with attorneys. I'm sorry that it ticks people off that they're having wind and they don't want it. I personally do not care either way, and I can't stress that enough. It doesn't make me any difference. I'm just doing my job. And people can say what they want and think I have an opinion. I'm doing what I'm informed and advised to do by council. And trying to do it right to keep the county from getting into any more lawsuits. I'm very concerned about some of these resolutions and what I hear coming down. I know that there's more lawsuits coming. I hate to see that. I don't have time to be dealing with it. There's more meetings and more meetings. And there's like the zoning board, for example, they are the greatest bunch of people to work with. They have done and there's some things come where they're gonna have to put more time in. And I feel bad for them because they don't get compensated for it. And they're being asked to do more and more. There's things behind the scenes that really concern me and I've and I've brought that up. Um there's a lot of things going on with buildings being built that are too close to too close to property lines, buildings being built without proper permits. Sorry, by code right now, we're going back to the supervisor determining how we want to receive them. Yeah, they can be charged and everything. And most of the time, you know, we've we've got other counties that, well, they make them tear it down. I had one that I was uh that was referred to me. I know darn well they knew they needed a permit. They acted like they just forgot. I mean, you know, a lot of it, the people will be tested. There is a lot of them that they had realized that they needed to do something, that they needed to follow code. Some people are under the impression, well, we can build whatever we want on our farm. Well, you can to a certain point, but you gotta follow the code. So we tried to fix that, remedied it the best we can. Uh unfortunately, some stuff has to go to Board of Adjustment meetings. We've been trying to schedule um for variances. And um this one that's coming up is a closed session. Uh they did not feel that we needed to put everything all in once, so we had to put that one off again. So there's a lot of things like that that are remaining unfinished that I want to make sure get taken care of the way they are or help the next person take care of it. I'm not going to leave and, you know, have somebody be able to say, well, we left a mess. Try to have it so with easy access for people to go. These files, though, I know are a mess, you know, the the manual ones. There's stuff that's in there that aren't on the computer that should be scanned in and stuff. You know, it's gonna take a lot of time, more time than what I've got with fifteen hour base a week. So this has been uh these items have been bothering me since before, you know, three weeks ago or so, and I decided, well, hey, I've I've gotta go on and do something else. I'm trying to figure out when would be a good stopping point. Now we're gonna have meets and everything too coming up. There's just, I'm sorry, but there's not enough time that I can meet, you know, but I certainly want to assist and and get the next person going. Question I have then is, you know, what do we do with I'm more than happy to help out and stuff, but I'm not, I'm gonna not be compensated after a certain point. There's a little difference in the phone call or come in for a half hour or something like that. I don't feel that that would be fair to happen, you know, like I said, I've got all this. There's a lot of stuff that I haven't turned in. Reimbursement or anything. I I feel I've been more than fair to everybody. And I want to take care of people like this gentleman that brought in his application. Make sure that that stuff is gone through and everybody's taken care of. So. But I kinda don't really agree with, well, he's agreed to resign. No, I I I made that decision, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be honest with you, but that's what I think.
Yeah, I just didn't like the way that. Oh, yeah, no, it's like, no, this this stuff's been going on and and uh
But it was your decision, that's what you told me, is your decision to ask the board to consider your voluntary resignation? Um and that they would consider it on May first.
And, you know, I'm not putting in the writing right now. That's my intention is May first. And that works okay with everybody. May first, I can say, is everybody good or do you need me for something else? And then I'd I'd like to, you know, make sure things are done, hand it off to the next person or or whatever's going on. I mean, if you can have somebody hired by then, or maybe it takes a little bit longer, but I want this to be a smooth transition. And I don't want anybody in the public to be messed up or delayed in in what they're trying to do. That's not fair to them.
So I think to start out, we would formally accept your resignation. I think we need to discuss timing and details as a board. But we can, if that's what you're doing, we can accept it formally if that's what you're doing this.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to say May first, and if you just say, hey, there's a few more things we need to do. There's some more stuff coming in. Can you help us organize these meetings or whatever? I mean, that's fine.
Yep.
But I want to be compensated for it.
Right.
And I guess there needs to be a discussion sometime on these hours.
Yeah.
Stuff.
I guess my recommendation would be to uh be effective immediately, but to make sure you're paid till May first. And to make sure we look at that with, you know, whether that's Michelle and Paul or whoever, you know, like, let's make sure you get paid, you know? And if that may first, you know, pay you until that date. I think it's, I think we're okay to do it immediately. I think we need to uh start getting it posted to get someone else coming in. And I, that's just my recommendation, but.
How long is that gonna be posted?
I mean, usually what, two weeks or so?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be some overlap. We'll have to appoint some.
As long as it's not gonna drag out, you know, you know, I can go middle of May or something to help you, to help you out. I don't want to drag it out, you know?
Per the code, we can, anyone that's an employee with the county, we can interim, put them in place. So I think we have plenty of people too that we could help out. I just want to make sure you get paid for what you've done. I think that, appreciate you bringing that up. That's important for sure.
Would would this be obviously for both positions, the weed commissioner?
Yeah, that's a joint, that's a joint.
Joint position.
Yeah, I know it's a joint position, but it's two separate kind of entities, so we have to.
There's obviously gonna be some things that aren't done or whatever. I mean, you might find something in there, you know, I've got some people that have been contacting me back on things. You know, you can be waiting on somebody to call you back. You can leave them a message and they and they don't get back to you and need to have, need to have stuff go smooth.
Yep.
But uh, yeah, this is just you need to make sure that your new person understands all the stuff that's going on. I mean, I did. But that was, you know, we knew that there were lawsuits and stuff, but now there there's more coming that were totally unexpected. And it's like, well, I I'm sorry, but I won't have time to effectively be doing this and my other stuff.
Gotcha.
And so I don't feel that that's fair to the county or the public and like I and I've gotta scramble to try to be here and 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 do all this stuff and then put off some of my other personal time. It's just not, not, not right. You, and, you know, I brought up my concerns about the way some, the way some of the things are handled and stuff, and I'll continue to do that if I see something I'll mention to you. Ordinance book and and uh all of this stuff with attorneys. I said, everybody needs to get their stuff together and get this figured out. I know it's a big deal with TCAT and everything, and they're mad and they're arguing. It's like like I told Laura the other night, I do what the attorneys say, you know? You take the position or something, you get the position, you can do it how you want to, but I strongly recommend that who's ever doing it, they listen to legal counsel and they go by the book and and they be careful. Not get sued. It's like I told you when you started, I don't care what you do with these ordinances, but don't get us sued. And we're getting a lot of lawsuits, so that's.
Yep. Okay, well, I think the first thing we need to do is formally accept the resignation. Uh and you can word it however you want and within your motion. And uh and then after that, we don't have, in my opinion, the authority to appoint somebody today. But if we're going to meet again tomorrow, we could potentially come on, or we're not meeting tomorrow. I don't think that we can appoint somebody today.
And uh like I, like I said earlier, I mean, if, you know, I need to come in and help a little bit, I mean, that's fine, but we start going into a number of hollers, there there needs to be something. Agree that I'm gonna be compensated.
Yeah. So I guess I'll make the motion to accept Babo Coon's resignation as zoning administrator and weed commissioner. Um I'd say effective immediately, but with pay until one May, working through what's all unpaid.
Oh, so you don't want, okay, we gotta have this clear.
Yep.
Like this permit stuff and these things that need to be finished up.
Yep.
You don't want any of that done?
No, my my girl, you know, go home, sleep on it, like, what's the best way to give it?
Problem I have is that's not clear to the public, you know, there's things like from over the weekend and stuff.
Yeah, we'll we'll get someone in place within a day or two, for sure.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll say I.
There's a motion and a second.
Can we have some, I I mean, I want to make sure that the public understands this, that Can we have some, I, I mean, I wanna make sure that the public understands this, that I'm just not leaving this stuff here. I'm willing to. Make sure that this is finished up. And now we're just leaving all this paperwork here, like this gentleman brings in a message, so how long will they be put up? I'm looking at these things that, hey, you know, there's some emails and stuff to answer most likely and finish up. So what, what do you wanna do? You know, we're just gonna leave them in and I say, well, I guess I won't be in the office anymore.
Yep.
You know, I, I would say in May first that we can make sure that this stuff was taken care of.
Yep, appreciate your concerns. Um, I, I think we'll get it, we'll get it covered. I think the, the pay thing is what we're trying to make sure we at least pay you to that May first.
I understand that, so the public understands that. Reason for the delay isn't because of me. I wanna have this taken care of.
Yep.
You are the one saying that you don't want me to do any more paperwork for the public. So they're gonna be sitting waiting for answers. So in essence, he's trying to put in a two-week resignation and you guys are fired. That's what's happening here. He's trying to work through this and make it, let's move the transition and you guys just wanna go. Guess I just don't understand what's going on there.
May Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's a typical thing that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, uh, the, from the HR perspective, to me, it's a voluntary resignation. So when any employee gives any sort of a resignation, then this board will make a decision on. So too much like there's no requirement to accept, um, you know, any, any date. The board could say, hey, it's your, we accept your voluntary resignation effective immediately and we won't pay you. That's an option as well. It sounds like this board is considering saying, we'll honor your two-week notice. Uh, go ahead and pay you for that time. Uh, but I think that's my understanding of what the motion is, is. It's not a termination. It's, it's accepting a voluntary resignation, honoring the original request. How, how it looks to me.
Correct. I mean, and this is, like I say, this, this isn't spur of the moment. This has been planned. I've been telling people, people can testify to that.
Okay.
And I've also told them that, hey, I wanna make sure I'm not leaving a mess, you know? And I guess this really sounds strange that here I am wanting to make sure that people are taken care of and you're saying, no, don't do any more. Just leave, we'll figure it out. That just sounds really strange to me. Why? You, you gotta do that to the motor grader worker that's, and now you're just done today. We're gonna pay you, but you've done today. But we don't have anybody to grade the roads and pile the snow there, but. We're gonna send you on your way.
Is this a way to make up a little compensation for your time?
Yeah, we'll make sure we get, Karen, we'll get something on this week, cause we need to get, within a day or two, we'll get an interim put in place and. We'll make sure the people are covered, so. Appreciate it though.
Okay, but are they gonna know what to do? They're not gonna know where stuff's at? Where, you know, you're gonna want me to show them anything or what? Or you just don't want me there?
That what we're saying.
Well, what, I mean, this, I don't know what. No, we're gonna go ahead and pay you for that time, but, you know, no, you don't need to finish that. We'll get somebody else in here now.
Well, we're going to have public comments right after this, so I'm sure we'll hear from what the public thinks of it.
After you make your decision, I mean, just, just say, I mean, here it's, it sounds really weird. I mean, I. There's nothing to hide down there. Yeah, I've got my snacks and stuff and I, everybody knows I want my snacks there. But, uh, you know, then I've got my personal items in there, the office. Pictures and everything, so I mean, but I mean, there's nothing being hidden or anything, so I mean, anybody can have access to anything. All they gotta do is ask. That's been that way all the time. But sorry, unfortunately, attorneys and stuff. Delay some of that stuff. So I'm clear on this. You don't want me doing any more paperwork in here.
The motion that was stated and voted on was that we would accept your resignation as a, immediately and that. We would pay you out until the end of, or till May first. Any paperwork that you have, any, we'll send a letter, I imagine, uh, your typical HR letter. We will need fees back and those kinds of things. I don't know whatever, what other property you have with the county, but that'll be also asked.
And then work with Michelle on the, the pay and maybe, you know, our chairman or whoever on the board, if somebody wants to volunteer to work with Michelle on the back pay. You could too, or David, or.
Hey, I just wanna make sure that the public understands that I am not leaving that there. I wanted to have it completed. Some people would be good to go.
Yeah, I, I think it's, this is as transparent as it can be. Uh, we're right now live on the, on the internet.
I guess I never, I can't say I've ever seen anything like this where, you know, they just, don't be, go ahead and leave today. Don't, don't do any more paperwork. All right. I just wanna make sure the public knows that I'd be taking care of it, making sure that. Everybody has what they're supposed to have.
Yeah.
But, uh, you don't want me to, so. Doesn't make me any difference as long as I'm getting paid. I just sure don't feel right by just leaving these people. I don't think that's right, but that's up to you.
I would just say it's not an uncommon employment practice when somebody turns in their two-week notice that they immediately let them go without pay. And so that's not uncommon at all. It can be as weird to you as you want it to be, but it's not really weird.
And so just to be clear, instead of him helping.
You're out of order.
Anything that I don't really care right now. You just want to throw his keys.
You're out of order.
That's, that's where we're at, right? There's your transparency.
There's your transparency.
Yeah, isn't that standard for our policy anymore? But it's public companies and all that, what are wrong?
We're going to move on to public comments since we're in public comment.
Uh, a police officer for over thirty-seven years, constantly stealing any cleaner's shoe in the counter. So nobody needs to even point to that kind of crap.
You said you were public comment.
You know, that's, I wasn't pointing to anything. And, and he's not getting called out or anything, you know?
We're in public comment. Continue the talk if we want.
I mean, that's fine. I just wanna make sure the public knows that, hey, here I am. Wanted to, and I made that clear to everybody. These last three weeks, but I don't wanna leave a mess. I wanna make sure that everything's taken care of. And, uh, so nobody's. Got things that aren't, um. Well, I think I stated everything, but just to be sure, you just want him to leave the skis on the desk after he gets snacks. And he's done. I mean, none, nothing else goes forward. There's no help with the other person. There's no. No transition at all. Bob, pack your shit up and leave. Basically is where we're at, right? Yes or no?
I mean, it, it speaks for itself. It was effective immediately. There's others, there's other counties that have zoning administrators, weed commissioners that can mentor. We have other people in the county that could.
I understand all that, but I'm just looking for.
So yes, we are making sure he is paid until his resignation date. And this is just, we will put someone interim to cover. We'll get it posted and likely, this is just my opinion, but likely hire someone else.
I understand this, but as for Bob, he's done it today, effective right now. Or a few minutes ago, whenever you're focused, right?
Yeah, that's what the motion was, yeah.
All right. What I understand is not expected to do any paperwork or you don't. Oh, that's nice.
I mean, it just be if there's any exit things that Michelle would do. I mean, that, that it could be now or if there's anything to do.
I just, I just don't like leaving the public out there with, uh. Stuff in the jar. That's up to you guys.
Karen.
Yeah, hi, Karen. So confidentiality, uh, and security are the big issues here in other. You, you said it sort of alluded to this, but in other jobs, banks, insurance companies, et cetera. Um, security usually overrides anything else that goes on. So I, so you're right. Other places do exactly what you guys are doing. Out, if you resign, you're done right now and usually walked out. Um, I know. Like six, seven months, I guess, since that chapter, so how time goes, oh my gosh. Anyhow, um, he has put in. Countless hours and that's just in public view. Nobody knows how many hours he's put in. Um, back in his office, out on the streets, on the phones, for me, maybe even for me going home. So anyway, I, I do wanna thank Bob for always being available because, because a lot of people. In the last few years in this county have not been accessible and have not been available and have, can't reach, I mean, they will not call back. So him just being available has been a good thing. Moving forward in this county, trying to get rid of, uh, stuff, the, the, the bad feelings. And, um, the hurt feelings. And I think right now that Bob's really. Got some hurt feelings, so I just wanna personally express my gratitude. Um, for sharing the time. Than what he expected, cause I've seen that. I've seen that personally, these hours that he's put in. Um, and I think that it would be very difficult to do a good job. In such a limited time and, and so moving forward. The, the next person will know, just they'll be putting in a lot more hours and they'll know the security and, and, uh, confidentiality. Uh, arrangements upfront. Thank you for letting me speak.
Andrew DeBord, um, I agree with him. It was a lot of hours. Therefore, I feel if we hired this person. There should be some hours added to it, especially now. I don't think Bob walked into this totally ignorant of the, the actual hours. He's more intelligent than that. Um, I do appreciate. As far as the zoning board goes. That he has spent that much time because there's, there's a lot going on. I just, I would like you to consider. Putting a few more hours on there. To whoever comes into zoning. And I don't know, I, I feel like if you let it go today, at least he's being compensated for some of his past hours. But that's how I'm looking at it. I don't know how you guys are feeling about it. I know it. Hurt feelings are hurt feelings. That's the way it is. I fly. But yeah, he's put a lot of hours into the zoning. We don't think we have a meeting for June.
I think, yeah, we should also get. Interim awards.
So hopefully whoever comes in can give. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Any other public comments? Richard?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify the financial end. You're gonna pay him out for fifteen hours a week to the next two weeks, correct? Till first of May. But what about the, uh, rest of the hours? I mean, and I will compliment her. I mean, Bob's put in a lot of hours and, you know, he's. Or just created some good meetings, so, uh, you know, I appreciate that. Uh, but. I, I mean, as a taxpayer, I'd like to know what you're going to be compensated in hours that were above and reaching. As a contract.
Per week or into?
Yeah, I mean, he said he has a lot of hours that he's put in. But yet, you know, they weren't approved. So how many hours are you willing to pay him out? Above and beyond the fifteen hours a week? I mean, he said he's put in a year's worth of hours already, which would be, well, fifteen and a half, fifty is seven fifty. Hours, you know? That's basically three hundred fifty hours more than. Sure. So are you willing to pay him out that much? And then do it.
I haven't seen the document. Anything that we agree to do will be run through this board. Okay?
I was just wondering. Thank you.
Fred Bill?
So, Bob, I'd just like to say thank you for everything you've put in. You've been doing a great job. If you're trying to go by code. Uh, when you're working with a board that doesn't wanna follow code all the time, that's not your fault. It's just the way it is. But, uh. If it was me and I were working for this county right now, I'd be worried about the national president buyer.
Well, he will give you a treat though. I guess I'm to third because. When I was brought on with John. Hurt knows, we just had a simple toss of the coin to see who would get the longer term and the shorter term. Superbowl is a toss of coins and I'm not complaining. Said it wasn't voted on, so you decided to vote on it, but you switched the term. Which, so some kind of manipulation. Didn't say anything then, now blah. You have to ask, what is your long-term goal? And it's not transparent. And so I'm sitting on the board of adjustment going, well, do they want me to go this way or that way, or what are they trying to do to rely on the board? It makes it really hard for me to know this.
Anybody else wish to speak? Go ahead.
In other employment areas. The answer to that question is you do your job. I would say where you're at, young farmer, just do your job every day till your job is done. If it's task fulfillment and you're finished at the end of the day or at the end of the week, great. You're not. And you are not allowed, you're not available, something happens that you can't finish your job. Then the next person will pick it up or they'll get it figured out. But the answer to that question is with any occupation, any career. Running a hog farm, you do your best every single day. Till the end of that day.
Anybody else wish to speak? I don't wanna leave anybody out. Those public comments? Did we get everything on the agenda?
Think so.
Yes.
Okay.
We will adjourn at ten seventeen. So you got? Thank you.
I'll just talk to me nothing.